I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, on one nation, under God, in the visible, liberatory, and justice for all.
Mr. McCoslin, can you please take a roll?
This is Vice. Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Mrs. Janasik.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Scialzo.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
All nine members present.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Scialzo, seconded by Ms. Turner.
Voting is open.
Mr. McCoslin, I have a little problem, so I'm yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to adopt the minutes from December 12th, two meetings in December 12th, and two meetings on December 13th.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Scialzo, seconded by Ms. Turner.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to announce three executive sessions, one that we had in January 10th, 2023, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, one on January 17th, 2023, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and I think we have one for tonight, which we did not have. There's one on the agenda that we did not hold tonight. So next, the report, student government report.
So for old business, we have Adopt a Family, SGA Hot Chocolate, and the Student Staff Secret Santa and Breakfast. For new business, we have Wish Week, the week of February 6th through February 10th, and students can send in wishes for gifts for their friends and teachers, and SGA will grant as many as possible.
Spirit Week will be the following week, the 13th through the 17th. There will be different spirit days every day to go along with this. All of the wishes will be granted. There will be games for students to play during the lunch periods. We will have a spirit assembly on Thursday, February 16th, for the upcoming bocce game, and to end out the week, there will be a Sadie Hawkins Dance on Friday, February 17th. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a PTO/PTA report?
Hi, I'm calling in.
Is that Tiffany?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So I'm gonna start with Abraham Lincoln. January has been very busy. They had a great time at the annual bowling party at Legacy Lanes. They had a spirit fundraiser day at Chipotle, and a fun Wacky Wednesday Spirit Day where the kids could dress up and match the attire. Next week's bellpoint drive to benefit Melody Stave, a student at Memorial battling cancer. All proceeds will go to Melody and her family, and the class that raises the most money will be rewarded with a pizza party. Ben Franklin. All are happy to be back at Franklin. They hosted their first assembly with Mad Science, and the kids just ate it up. It was exciting and educational all in one. They will be hosting a snowball dance on January 27th. George Washington Elementary. Washington hosted a cosmetic magic or laser show assembly on the 12th. The winner of the yearbook cover contest will be announced at the end of the month. The winner's artwork will be featured on the cover of the yearbook. They will also receive a Polaroid camera. Memorial Elementary. Memorial is starting off 2023 with some of their favorite fundraisers and activities. They just kicked off the pepperoni sales, which is always a fan favorite. The Read-A-Thon begins at the end of the month and runs through the month of February. Last year, students brought in over $4,000. That's a ton of reading. Also in February, they will have their first art and science expo since before COVID. It was great seeing all the students put the hard work into their projects. William Penn Elementary. William Penn has had such a fun and busy month of December, they had their first family brunch movie night. It sold out in two days. It was a huge success, and they are looking forward to the next one they get to offer. They also held their annual Secret Santa shop for the students. Overall, it was a great month celebrating the holidays with the William Penn family. Lastly, Neil Armstrong Middle School. NAMs PTO board is sending a big thank you to all of the volunteers, especially Nicole Webb and Carrie Mills, for the most successful holiday charity carnival yet. Everyone had so much fun, and three great causes received generous donations. Coming soon is Battle of the Book and Read-A-Thon. Excitement is building. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Is there a solicitor report?
There is not this evening.
Thank you. Any updates from the different committees? No? Okay.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Let me start with recognition. In honor of the commitment and time school board directors volunteer, on behalf of our schools and community, January has been designated School Director Recognition Month. The work of this board is vital to the success of our students and our schools. Your work is complex, diverse, from voting on budgets, adopting policy, conducting comprehensive planning. School boards make key decisions that drive public education. School directors devote on average 10 hours each month to board business, which has only been made more challenging by the ongoing effects of pandemic and issues that affect the well-being of our students and families. Board service is unpaid, and school directors are often motivated to pursue the role out of a desire to benefit kids and the community. As citizens and parents, the success of our schools is a collective interest. So this month, we recognize our school directors for their time and dedication. And on behalf of the administration and the School Boards Association, I'll present each of our members with an honorary certificate.
Thanks, but did you say 10 hours a month? What are we doing wrong?
On average.
Do you want to get overtime? Time and a half, right?
On average, 10.
Well, we're not average.
The second item for tonight is to, as we have tried to do for this board all along, is to share with you some details about employees who'd be retiring and leaving service of the district. We have one such employee tonight, her name's Twannette Blair, and she began her career in Bethel Park as a classified sub in August of 2012. And a year later, in September, she became a special education paraprofessional at Washington, and she's still there today. This Friday will be her last day with Bethel Park, so we wish Twannette Blair well. The strategic plan update, we have selected one of our six categories each month to highlight, update the board and the community on our progress. I didn't print these updates for the board this month for two reasons. One, because it's almost the same as it was last time you saw this category, and also because we try to be a little more frugal with the paper. This is actually available for everybody on our website. It's posted there in real time, so as it's updated, it shows up on the website as updated. So this month, we're focusing on the three goals of the human resources category, and I'll start by reminding the board about those vision statements we developed to go along with the goals. The first vision statement was, we maximize our human resources by thoughtful utilization and assignment of staff. The second vision is that Bethel Park employees are proud of their job and of the district, and they feel supported and valued. And the third vision we have is every staff member is invested in their personal and professional growth, and Bethel Park helps them achieve that growth through high-quality, targeted staff development. So the first category, the first goal in that bucket, is about maximizing our staff. And the investment we make, it's actually the largest line item in our budget, is personnel. Really speaks to improving the student-to-educational-professional ratio. To be clear, it's not the same as our average class sizes, and ideally, improving the ratio does not negatively impact class size. But as our enrollment declines, and has over the past 10 years, so too should our number of employees decline. So our strategic plan has goals to improve educational outcomes and optimize class size while at the same time reducing the number of employees and educational professionals on the payroll. This is achieved optimally through natural attrition of employees retiring or leaving the system, and that happens annually, but it takes time. Combining the elementary schools, moving fifth and sixth grades out of NAMs will also impact that ratio, since we'll need fewer support staff for three buildings instead of eight. So as I report to you tonight, the goal is clearly intended to be one that will take every bit of the five years that we set for ourselves to achieve, but we have been making incremental progress towards achieving that goal. The second goal aligned to our vision is to reach 90% or more of our staff in Bethel Park reporting job satisfaction and feelings of connectedness, respect, and value. I think this is a critically important goal for us because we know the essential value of great educational professionals in schools and classrooms. There's a mountain of research to back us up on that. Moreover, we have high expectations for the caliber of people we bring on board, like those on the agenda for your approval tonight. We need to attend to this goal because we must be sure we take good care of our people. Now, I admit, we did not have any employee job satisfaction survey to measure this goal, at least not yet, but we've got to get that part figured out. But more than that, though, achieving this goal is going to happen because we make time for the staff's professional needs. We do this by enhancing employee wellness, increasing mental health services and awareness, incorporating or enhancing wellness spaces and offerings, and organizing wellness activities for our staff and students. One of the activities we tried this year was hosting breakfasts in each of the buildings and offering information about wellness and little prizes for teachers to take away. These moments were impactful, and I believe well-received. Many thanks to Dr. Mench for organizing this event in each building, and to the administrators who showed up at the breakfast to support and engage with the teachers. The third goal is aligned to our vision. It states that the staff's professional development feedback forms will show an average rating of 3.5 out of four on the quality, usefulness, and effectiveness of our professional development. We're showing a modest 0.05 percentage point increase in the overall average responses, while tiny growth will take this as a win. The administrators, namely Mrs. Figlioli, Mrs. Wells, Mr. Slezak, Dr. Schu, and Mench, have put considerable time into planning our professional development programs. Some have made presentations themselves. We have adopted a universal design to our PD offerings to model what we expect in our classrooms. We have prioritized the development of our staff because we know that when they get better, we all get better, and most importantly, the students get a better experience. While we're pleased with this modest progress of the goals, it's worth saying again that these goals are seismic shifts in our workplace. The shifts take time to accomplish, and it takes even more time for the shifts to produce long-term growth and staff satisfaction that we're looking for. How many times can I put the word shifts into this? It's getting close every time. I close by inviting everyone on our staff to embrace your own professional growth and partially and partake fully of the professional development programs we have, and as us English teachers are fond of saying, carpe diem, we'll say carpe pedium, seize the in-service day. Okay? I'm going to turn the mic over to our Mr. Cromie for his five big things.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Five big things, we do this monthly. Of course, there's always more than five wonderful things happening at Bethel Park. We have to pare it down, this is in no particular order, but these are some of the wonderful things that are happening at Bethel Park this month. Our first one is recognition of NAMs. The carnival that they had just before Christmas time netted an astounding total of $11,211.09 during their annual charity carnival. The proceeds from the festival were then divided equally between Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh, St. Jude Medical Research Hospital, and the South Hills Pet Rescue. So that's a great job by NAMs. Our second big thing is our adaptive sled. Over the holidays, MON Mania, an organization that raises funds to support the Muscular Dystrophy Association, surprised Sam and Emily Osliger, students at Neil Armstrong Middle School and George Washington Elementary School respectively, with an adaptive sled that offers more stability and support for the rider. The belts and the safety straps are beneficial for maintaining control. There's also a place for adults to stand behind the special riders. Dr. Schu and Mrs. Janelle Cosnati, a teacher at Neil Armstrong, nominated the Osliger family for the prize. Third, we very proud to announce that we have five Bethel Park teachers have been selected for this year's Transform Ed Teacher Innovation Fellowship. They are Caitlin Hyder, Jess Mahoney, Lynn Serenna, Melissa Toth, and Janine Wessel. What's interesting about this is that there are only 15 total fellowships awarded, and Bethel Park had five of them, so we're really proud of that. And the fellows meet a few times each year in person, and they'll receive a mini grant of about $1,500 to experiment within their classrooms. Bethel Park High School will present The Addams Family, March 15th through the 18th, at 7:00 PM each night. Ticketing details will be announced in the coming days. There are, again, two casts, so some of the show's leads are, for Gomez will be played by Noah Stiglitz and Nick Dell. Morticia Adams will be played by Clara McGuff and Aaliyah Taylor. Uncle Fester will be played by Anthony Hughes and Dylan Fennell. And Wednesday Addams will be played by Megan Dehaven and Elizabeth Robinson. One of the cool things about this show is it's nostalgic for people who are my age, but there's also a very popular show on Netflix called Wednesday, and so the kids immediately recognize the premise, and it's a very popular show for younger people as well. And finally, we have, last week, Emily Carter, legendary swimmer here, was, and it was announced that she'll be inducted into the WPIL Hall of Fame for the class of '23 in June. She was one of 15 inductees. Emily's career numbers are just ridiculous. As you kind of look through it, you realize that she's one of the great athletes to ever come through the WPIL, much less Bethel Park. Just want to go over this real quickly. Emily won seven WPIL and five PIAA gold medals during her illustrious career. She also led Bethel Park to three WPIL titles from 1998 to 2000, and back-to-back PIAA crowns in 1998 and 1999 under legendary coach Bill Kennedy. Carter also earned a ridiculous 11 All-American nods over her high school career, and set WPIL records in the 200 medley relay, the 100 breaststroke, as well as the PIAA and the 200 medley relay. Her WPIL record in the 100 breaststroke stood for about 15 years, and she was inducted into the Bethel Park Hall of Fame in 2007. She was also a wonderful student, and after leaving Bethel Park, she swam for Stanford University, which is the swimming equivalent of getting a scholarship to Alabama to play football. It's ridiculous how successful she was. She's now an executive with Visa. Also, not to be outdone, our assistant athletic director, Laura Grimm, was also inducted into the, will also be inducted in June. Laura went to Central, excuse me, to Sarah Catholic, where she compiled marks of 1,940 points, 497 assists, 391 steals, and 283 three-pointers over her varsity career. She led the Eagles to an incredible 103 and 12 record in her four seasons. So, and she's obviously been a very successful administrator in her post-playing career, and we're very happy to have her, and I think it's incredible that Bethel Park, there were really only three women who were inducted into the Hall of Fame, and two of them have strong ties to Bethel Park, so we're very proud of that. So that's all I have for you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Figlioli and Mrs. Wells, who's remote tonight, will share their bright spots in the curriculum and instruction department.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me virtually?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for having us this evening. Tonight, we wanted to focus on a few things that we have been working on that are helping us to build a strong foundations. The first thing we wanted to call attention to this evening is our upcoming kindergarten registration. This is slated to begin the first week of February, but we are happy to report, we believe we are ahead of schedule, and that we are hoping to open kindergarten registration, which will be completed electronically through our Butler School Registration next week. Please look for announcements on our social media accounts, and of course, on our Bethel Park webpage, for more information on how to register your incoming kindergarten student. We have been working as a K to five ELA department under the direction of Ms. Sarah Liberto and our ELA principal, Jay Johnson, and of course, our staff representatives on our primary ELA programming in our current K to two, and of course, looking towards the future in our K to five building. We have spent some of our in-service time working directly with our staff, looking at the items that are helping all of our students to be successful, in areas where we may need some more support and bolstering as we move into one building. And in helping us, we are grateful for our partnerships with West Jefferson Hill School District, and Assistant Superintendent Matt Patterson, and Superintendent Dr. Janet Sarden, who invited six teacher representatives, myself, Jay Johnson, and Mrs. Mandy Figlioli, to their campus to see their scheduling, their buildings, and their teachers in action with some of the programming intervention and scheduling that they have instituted in their district. We are looking forward to hopefully visiting two other school districts in the winter-springtime so that we are looking at what all of our neighbors are doing to build and bring success to their students so that we can continue to be best in class with our students. And now I will pass the mic over to Mrs. Figlioli, who will share some wonderful experiences that we had with our students.
We had a really incredible opportunity, a very, very bright spot. On January 13th, we have entered a partnership with the Children's Museum of Pittsburgh to assist us in the design of the new elementary center. So on that Friday, the 13th, we invited five different classrooms, one from each of the elementary centers, elementary schools, excuse me. I really want to thank the teachers who brought their students, Michelle McCain, Georgia Ann Collins, Lisa Nath, Kim Sarafini, Katie Mucci. They each brought about three to five students up to central office, and there you can see Debbie Coppola and Anna Fallcamp. They led what are called design charrettes, and charrettes are really a participatory planning type of session where you're trying to gain insight from the users and making sure that every voice was heard. So Debbie and Anne came to see us, along with these teachers and students, and they brought a lot of stuff with them. They had tables all along this wall, just filled with a variety of materials for the students to explore. And they asked the students a very simple question, they wanted them to consider, what would make school your favorite place to be? And so they laid out all of these materials, I have some pictures that you can see. First table just had some different type of like sensory materials, dramatic play materials, some craft materials, things from nature. You can see here, they have some different recyclables, some old toys. They also had different types of blocks and tinker toys, balls, vehicles, bricks, and so all of those things were laid out for the students to explore. And they asked the students to think about what they would like school to be, what would make school a great place to be. So they gave them about five minutes to just explore the materials. The students had total agency, autonomy over what they were doing, and they looked through all of the things and quickly found their way. We were in this room, wide open, to different places within the room. They were very serious about their selections. Some were very happy with what they took at first, some made multiple trips back to the tables, but you can see Debbie there. She was a very masterful facilitator and observer, and she mingled amongst the kids, as did many adults in the room, and really just kind of speak to them about what their vision was for the new elementary center. So some children found themselves involved in crafting. We had one young man who realized that something was magnetic, and then began testing everything on the tables to see what else was magnetic. Some kids just engaged in some traditional physical play. One of the most interesting groups were these two young ladies. They started building a marble run, and they were engaged in what I would call mastery play, where you're trying to gain control over your environment. And so it started very simply with them trying to make this run, the ball was spilling out, and so they were starting to kind of rethink their design, and then other people started to notice what they were doing. The adults are not at all, were just observing, asking questions, not offering advice on how to fix this. And the other kids were coming and going. It was amazing how wonderful the young ladies were about not trying to hinder anyone who wanted to participate. So anyone that came over, they allowed them to be a part of their design. Sometimes they added things to the design that made it worse, but the girls were absolutely wonderful, and at the end, they had, that was their fabulous marble run at the end that was, really, there were a lot of contributors to it, and it was just really amazing to watch the kids work and collaborate. And when kids have that opportunity to play, they can really do amazing things, and so watching it was truly, truly inspiring, to see the kids have their own ideas of what they can accomplish. I think the adults had as much fun as the kids. Some pictures of Mrs. Sarafini, and Mrs. Mucci, and Mrs. Nath. It was just great to see the teachers enjoying themselves and interacting with the kids. And there was a star of the show. The final question was, what does a school need? And you'll see there, our friend Jackson, he raised his hand about 15 times, and a brilliant, brilliant, brilliant young man. I chose two quotes that I wanted to capture from him. The first was that a school needs learning and friendship and creativity and knowledge, and we're all just looking at him like, yes, yes. He had many other ideas about solar energy, school safety. He was in that picture telling Dr. Walsh that we need to make sure the science labs are well-equipped because we need to find a cure for cancer. He wanted to skip lunch so that he could give us more ideas, but it was really validating, not only validating but inspiring, to hear the kids' answers to this question, because I really feel like we're on the right track in these meetings with Draw Collective and with the addition of the Children's Museum. They want bright colors and toys, and these were their exact words, a theme that feels welcoming, curiosity in science, inspirational messaging, student work displayed, more gyms, open space, wide open space to play. open space, wide-open space to play and learn, outdoor places to play and learn, a fun plan for indoor recess. So it was much welcomed feedback from the students and just so inspiring and validating to be a part of it. So, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. That's all we have.
Next, are there any public comments on the agenda, items that are listed today? Any? Any call-ins? No?
No call-ins.
Okay. Let's move on to the business items for the consent agenda. Mrs. Janisak, can you take those, I think it's 28 items or so?
All right. I moved the consent agenda. Number one, school-sponsored overnight educational activities. Number two, Penn State University affiliation agreement. Number three, local holidays. Four, Navians training. Five, high school course selection guide. Six, acceptance of resignation. Seven, change of assignment. Eight, appointment of personnel. Nine, approval of unpaid leave of absence. Ten, approval of paid intern. Eleven, approval of administration tuition reimbursement. Twelve, approval of professional tuition reimbursement. Thirteen, memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. Fourteen, December 2022 and January 2023 salaries and bills. Fifteen, November 2022 financial report. Sixteen, December 2022 financial report. Seventeen, budgetary transfers. Eighteen, approval of student services contract. Nineteen, payment for Independence Middle School Phase I renovations. Twenty, payment for K-5 elementary school project. Twenty-one, payment for Independence Middle School Phase II renovations. Twenty-two, payment for the bus garage renovation project. Twenty-three, approval of change order for the bus garage project. Twenty-four, payment for K-5 elementary school project. Twenty-five, revision to policy final reading. Twenty-six, revision to policies final readings. Twenty-seven, student agreements. And twenty-eight, approval of consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Ms. Janisak, seconded by Mr. Scalzo. Mrs. Scalzo, can you take the curriculum committee items?
Under curriculum committee, we have three items. Number one, 2023-2024 school calendar. Number two, professional development. And number three, school-sponsored overnight educational activities. I would like to move all three items.
Second. Motion is made by Mr. Scalzo, seconded by Mr. Grisbeck.
I'd like to do an addition to the 2023-24 calendar. It actually happens in the notes section where it states graduation and rain dates. Friday, June 9th needs to also be added as a rain makeup day.
Should we hold that one out and vote separately then, so you can make an amendment, so it's on record, or can we handle it like that?
Do you mean Friday, June 7th?
Yes.
Okay.
You're good, yeah. Friday, June 7th.
Just so there's two alternative makeup days.
Yeah, for the public, that would allow graduation to happen on Thursday, which it is scheduled for. If there is inclement weather, you would have Friday evening and Saturday morning before it would be moved indoors, which outdoors allows anybody to attend. Indoors, the seniors are given tickets. So we want to give every opportunity for everybody to celebrate graduation.
Dr. Walsh, last week, there were nine two-hour delays in the schedule, and after a lot of feedback that we got, we dropped it down to three. Could you just talk real briefly for the public, just so they understand why those nine were there initially, and then kind of why we adjusted to three?
Sure. So the district has obligations through various state laws that have come through the system in the last three or four years that have professional development requirements attached to it. A site, for instance, Act 55 passed last year, has some requirements now for a certain amount of hours of training for staff on threat assessments and school safety. EpiPen administration training. There's quite a list of these mandatory trainings. And because we're working and using all of our in-service time for these objectives that are school strategic plan-related, we tried to move all of that in-service requirements, all of those other trainings into the Act 80, or the two-hour delay times, so we could tick those off without messing up our in-service calendar, which is, you know, larger chunks of time for these kind of projects. Understanding the concerns that were raised last week, we removed the extra ones that we added and stuck with the three that we currently have.
Thank you.
Along those lines, if I could ask, because we got a lot of emails, a lot of people wondering about the May 14th date. I'm assuming that's an election?
That's election day, yeah, primary election day.
That's what I thought, because we use our schools as voting places. We prefer to close school for that day. And several people were confused about the difference between records days and in-service days, and wanted us to move records days. And maybe you could explain why that can't be.
Those coincide with the ends, the end of a marking period, and it's time for teachers to complete grades, you know, grading and submit their grades for report cards.
One more question on that. We utilize two-hour delays as, you know, our opportunity to utilize Act 80 days in various trainings and things like that. Just out of curiosity, why two-hour delays as opposed to early dismissals? That was a comment that I saw a number of times from, you know, parents and caregivers, that perhaps an early dismissal may be a little bit easier on their schedule. So I was just curious why the...
Yeah, probably would be. The problem is our transportation department. We serve so many non-public schools that trying to do a two-hour delay would conflict with their normal dismissal times. We'd have a hard time with the number of drivers and buses we have. We'd have a hard time making two-hour delays work, or pardon me, two-hour early dismissals work.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay.
Voting is open.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor, can you take the Personnel Committee items?
Yes, today, under Personnel, we have four items. I'll read those. Approval of extra duty responsibility program, 2022-2023. Acceptance of resignations. Separation agreement and release. And appointment of personnel, which, after we vote, I'd like to make an announcement.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion is made by Mr. McGregor, seconded by Mrs. Turner. Any comments, questions? No? Okay.
Voting is open.
Thank you. I take it we have our new football coach in the back?
Yeah, then that's the announcement I wanted to make. Now, Dr. Walsh, are we still asking new hires to sing a tune from their favorite musical?
Well, of course.
I thought it was the alma mater, Mr. McGregor.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we have Phil Peckich.
Thanks, everyone, for having me here tonight, and I appreciate everyone's support throughout the process. Over the past two years, I've had the pleasure of being here on staff at Bethel Park and really enjoy the atmosphere of the community and alignment from the top down with the administration, the school board, to faculty, to students, and throughout the community. I look forward to growing the program and leading them in the right direction and building on what we started the past couple of years.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Yes, and we also appointed tonight Brittany Stefanic. So come on up. She's a special education teacher at Benjamin Franklin.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am very excited, very eager for this opportunity and to begin my journey here in Bethel Park. So thank you. I really appreciate it.
Well, welcome.
Welcome.
Good luck.
Facilities, Mr. Modrac, I think it's just a info-only?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Christensen. I wanted to give the board an update here. As our representative for the South Central Area Special Schools, more commonly known as the Pathfinder School, we are reviewing some extensive work in a very old building. So the one project that's presented here to the board, or will be, is some work on the HVA system, with a total cost of this phase is $115,000, but according to their facilities director, probably looking over a three-year period, the cost of anywhere up to about $350,000. It is an old building. We experienced that firsthand with our own buildings ourselves. At this point in time, the board, myself included, I met last week, and to the cost of $115,000 to make these repairs for this upcoming summer, we are going to ask the five districts that are part of the jointure, it's us, Mount Lebanon, Upper St. Clair, Chertsey's Valley, and Carleton, to split the cost at this phase. There is reserves funds, but at this point in time, we thought it's more prudent to start having the districts contribute at this point to pay for these costs, to leave our reserves in a good balance. The percentage we are going to be asked to pay is 22%, which is based on our enrollment numbers in the Pathfinder School. So information has been forwarded to Dr. Walsh, Dr. Jan Santi, and Mr. McCoslin about the upcoming expense and how we then can sit there and they can discuss how we can meet our part of that 22% of this project. So, and again, I'll probably be coming back to the board over the next couple of years with similar information as the work keeps to be completed down there. But keep in mind, it is an old building, it's probably over 60 years old, and upgrades have been made throughout the years, but we're going to get hit pretty hard on this HVAC equipment that's down there.
Mr. Modrac, was there any discussion on maybe adjusting the tuition rates for the other schools we service? Because you're right, there's like five primary members, but there's a lot of other schools.
Yeah, so there's like 90 students total, and they have to pay a tuition rate, those who are not part of the five in the jointure. We do not pay, and I don't know, how many students do we have down there, Dr. Rich, Dr. Ju?
I'd say it's about between 14 and 15 students.
You know, again, I guess some districts have a few more, some have a few less, out of that five. That has all been factored in. Some of these rates are determined by the IU, which is the leaseholder of the building. It's just the five of us are responsible for maintaining the building. We do get compensated from the IU, the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, on some of these expenses. Like one time, they had a big project, I was told, involving the roofing system, and the IU then contributed a certain amount to it. But this phase of this project, because it is on the lower end of $115,000, we're looking at the five joint schools to pick up the cost at this time.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do, so we're looking at this almost like Steel Center, as we are a part of that also. So the other question, I guess I'm going back a little bit on what Mr. Christensen asked. There are other schools, I mean, I live across the street, you can see all those buses that come in from pretty far distances to have students go there. In the future projects, would they be asked to pay an additional amount of tuition?
Whatever those costs are tabulated throughout the year and broken down per student, they're passed on, a lot of it's for the educational needs. And again, the IU, my understanding, the IU sets that up. Us, as us, as a jointure group, we're more responsible for the building. Costs otherwise are passed on to them, though, as they operate, function, educational, and the services that are provided. But pretty much is like, think of it, for me, the easy way I look at it is, I think of it's like one of our buildings. Again, just 22% of it at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Grisbeck, can you take the Finance Committee items?
Yes, I can. There are three items tonight under the Finance Committee agenda. Item number one, change order for the bus garage project for $65,281.60 to Hayes Design Group. Number two, payment for K-5 Elementary School Project to HRG for a total of $21,991.48. And item number three, approval of agreement for drug and alcohol testing services for DDTA Services, Inc. Does anyone have any questions about those three items? Mr. McCoslin, could you just talk about briefly what led to the change order for the bus garage project?
Probably Mr. Jan Santi can talk better about that than I can.
Yes, I can. Thank you. So basically, we had a lot of underground work that was not anticipated, which meant a lot of moving dirt around, and it caused a lot more expense. Some of that had to do with carting some material off of site, but most of it was actually putting it back in and changing the landscape to try to keep the material on-site as opposed to having it go off-site at a much greater cost. So we actually ended up saving more money than we anticipated with the change order.
Understood. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Dr., I have a question. Dr. Jan Santi, is this the information they're telling us that the regulations have changed about the status of the dirt? We were given that after the construction started down there. The state regulations had changed?
They had changed, actually, in 2020. We were unaware of it. We were unaware of it when we began the project, and I think the folks on the project were unaware of it, too. But when, you know, meeting with the perm meeting with Bethel Park, it was discovered, and that's why you can't just haul dirt off now. If it has historical dirt, it has some possible contaminants that would undergo about a 12-step test process that basically, you know, almost 99%, it would not pass the grade of pure fill. So it's very expensive to take that off property, probably four times the amount of just taking clean fill out. So once you get down below a certain level, then it's clean fill. So we took the historical fill and actually graded the property up a little bit higher, which actually worked well as far as drainage goes, and we put that, re-put that soil back in after we put the underground detention tanks in. So that's how we got it to, it was anticipated, if you recall, that it was going to cost somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000, and we kept it down to $55,000, which we're pleased we were able to do that.
Thank you. That's what I was going to get into, the savings we have on that. Thank you, sir.
Dr. Walsh, could you explain number three, drug and alcohol testing services, just so the public understands who's being tested? And is this a new process or just a new vendor?
It's just a new vendor. We're required to test our bus drivers randomly, and so this would be the replacement vendor.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Could I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGregor.
Motion carries.
Ms. Turner, can you take the Policy Committee items?
Yes, thank you. We have the second of three readings on revision 913, and the first of three readings on the purchases subject to bid in quotation, and then that's 610 and 611 purchases budget. And these aren't set by us, Dr. Walsh, these are set by the state, correct? So we are literally just putting the numbers in every, is Rebecca shaking her head yes? We are literally just replacing numbers with numbers. So I think the question is, Mr. Christensen, do we want to do three readings or do we want to?
Yeah, the policy is not changing, just the thresholds by which certain things have to be publicly bid or get three quotes.
Right, and that comes down from the state. That is not the district choosing numbers.
Right.
And that does fluctuate every year. That is changed.
Okay.
I don't know if...
So the question is, do we want to avoid three readings and approve it tonight or next meeting, or what?
Hmm? I don't know.
Okay. I mean, is there a deadline coming up?
I didn't know if we were bidding... I mean, I was just, I didn't know if we were bidding on other things and we needed this.
It's not critical. I mean, we...
Okay, that was our question.
We follow it anyhow when it comes out, but this would just formalize it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't critical with all the other things that are rolling out.
We don't anticipate any bids in the interim, so we'll be fine.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, then that's fine. No, that's okay. We just didn't know if we needed it based on IMS, based on other things.
We would follow the updates to state law and regulations. We would follow that over our policy, because that would essentially trump our policy and state law regs. So I think we stick to our policy about how many readings we would do anyway. So I would say just proceed how we're moving. We'll follow state racism law. We'll be in.
Okay. We just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments on these policies? No? Okay, that's it for the business items. Any public comments on anything related to school matters? Now's your two minutes.
I'll start out with a quote. "I have almost reached the regrettable conclusion that the Negro's great stumbling block in the stride toward freedom is not the Ku Klux Klaner, but the white moderate, who is more devoted to order than to justice, who prefers a negative peace, which is the absence of tension, to a positive peace, which is the presence of justice." That's a quote from Martin Luther King, written in his letter from the Birmingham Jail in 1963. He was aiming it at the white religious leaders in the Birmingham area who claimed they morally agreed with Dr. King but disagreed with his methods. But it could have been aimed at this school board less than one year ago. When you listen to a public comment detailing specific racial injustices occurring in our schools by a recently graduated Bethel Park alum, a brave young woman who was asking nothing more than the board approve the contributions, successors, and leaders class that was put before you by the social studies department. You listen to this and wrongly voted the elective class down without a single legitimate reason being provided. I'm here to ask this board to right that wrong and signal to the social studies department that you'd be willing to reconsider your misguided decision. Maybe they take you up on it, maybe they don't, but at least the department would know they now have the option, and that classes like this would get better consideration going forward. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any call-ins?
No. No call-ins.
Any other comments from here? Board comments?
I have one, as I said, as a liaison to the Bethel Park Public Library. One of the things I believe Mr. Cromie put out in the update is that library cars are going to be offered from sixth to 12th grade, and it is just to give our students more circulation options. If they are looking for certain topics, high schools might not be able to carry them just because of volume. The public library in Bethel Park may not, but it can be here in a day and a half because we have the inter-access library, and it can come from Oakland's Carnegie Library or if it happens to be somewhere else, and the student still has the research and the book that's necessary. So that is something that is optional for every, you know, sixth through 12th grade. They're giving them to them for free. Take advantage of it, especially as, you know, research papers are coming due second semester for a lot of high school students. Thank you.
I would add to that, that you're actually not even limited just to Pittsburgh, too. You can request books from across the country. So even if, you know, we happen to not have something from Pittsburgh, and, you know, they could request it from California or wherever, I mean, any book.
I'm just going to quote that that could take more than the timeframe that some of the papers are due in. So that's why I'm saying, if we leave it to the regional area, they could have it in a day.
Yeah, great program, really good resource. Thank you.
I've got something.
Any other comment?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, sorry.
Excuse me. There is one more tech talk session, which is next Monday at 7:00 PM at the LGI Room in the high school. And this last one, I feel like we saved the best for last, and it's called "Dealing With Digital Drama." And I think everybody in the room has at some point dealt with some drama on their device or online in some way, shape, or form. So the discussions have been wonderful. I've been privileged to moderate those, and I hope more people come this coming Monday. We had more people this past Monday, and I'd love to see these talks and things on technology keep growing, because I think it's a big part of, it's contributed to our kids' mental health and well-being. So come on out and talk Monday at 7:00. Thank you.
Absolutely. You know, I got to thank you. I think the board should thank you for taking that on. It's a great initiative, and you're right, it is so linked. I mean, we've all had kids, we've all, you know, as they struggle through, you know, all kinds of anxiety and stress from social media. I mean, for you to kind of lead parents through this process, that's fantastic. Very good. Any other comments? I just want to comment a little bit on the strategic plan update that you gave. I think, you know, we keep a scorecard to try to make things objective in some ways, but I do have to say that I've heard, and I think others on the board have heard also, just very positive comments from the staff regarding the leadership, the whole leadership team that's in place. It, you know, we had big problems, what, two and a half years ago or so? And building a positive culture is just such a great way to have, to make our product that we provide, education, just more productive, more effective. And that, you know, you got to have a positive culture to have a winning attitude. And that's what we want. We want to win in everything we do, okay? I mean, we've got big plans to, you know, reshape, you know, academics and everything related to this strategic plan. And I just think that the, you know, administration should be called out also for setting the right example, for building, you know, a positive culture of leadership. And, I mean, it's, that's great news. I mean, that's not what's on our report card, but I think it's absolutely a factor. Any other board comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
All in favor?
No.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.